Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome participants to the Hybrid Planning Board meeting of March 13th. And the first item is to call the meeting's order. Ms. Creighton?
Here.
Ms. Delicio?
Here.
Ms. Foley?
Here.
Ms. Holley?
Yes, here.
Ms. Filbrick?
Here.
And Ms. Tenny is not here. Thank you, looks like we have a quorum tonight. I'd like to remind all board members, guests, as to be recognized by the chair if you wish to speak, and this meeting's being recorded. First item on the agenda is acknowledgment receipt of correspondence. I have three letters from Ayavoni. God, her name?
Lorraine.
Lorraine Ayavoni, March 8th, March 2nd, February 28th. And also received a letter from Mr. Colbert on 31. And Gail, you said there was some municipal?
It was in the packet.
There are three.
Okay.
Municipal letters.
Well, I have, any others? At this time, I'd like entertain any public comments or items that are not on the agenda. Okay, so.
So I just want, I'm just double checking. So the correspondence from Colbert, it's typed wrong in our, what's Colbert? Mr. Colbert, this is why I was just a little sensitive recently passed, so it's Mrs. Colbert. So I just want to make sure we're correct on the amendments, sorry.
So, on the first item, proposed changes for public hearing warrant article discussion. So Chris Holley, Susan Filbrick, and I intended in person the Select Board meeting on March 6th. At that time, the Select Board endorsed and moved forward to town meeting new section on adult entertainment, 8.6. They voted not to move forward on our proposed amendments to administer of zoning bylaw, Section 12. I think this was mainly due with the clause on the selection process for alternative, alternates. Regarding the two remaining amendments on senior housing and ADUs, they would hold a decision on town meeting floor. And we have today in our audience Becky Jakes and online Kathy Bellata. If you're here to speak at this time, or did you think that's pretty much the summary of what went on?
Becky Jakes, current chair of Select Board, and you've covered it correctly. And the reason we are waiting at this point to make our recommendations on the floor is really based on the late response from the AG's office and how that would relate to potential amendments.
Okay, got it.
So.
Any discussion through the board on this?
So I listened to the meeting, and I thought the decision was going to come before the floor, no?
No, the town, it's already gone, town warrant is gone to printers. So we will have to make our, we will make our recommendation on the floor.
But you withheld the, you didn't include the administrative changes, correct?
No, those were not put forward because we were not comfortable as a board with how that process for appointing was the way which it was arrived. So, no, we were not comfortable with that.
Ron, I'll just state that, so with the administrative bylaw, I think the Select Board had said, and correct me if I'm wrong, Becky, that, and I think it was Kathy Bellata who's on as well, that they did not want it to be, the associate members to be appointed by the planning board. I don't know if they wanted it to be joint or not, and so I did some research, and there's obviously towns in the Commonwealth that have elected planning boards and appoint their own associate members. So I wasn't clear.
Mary, I'm just gonna cut you there because in, as pertains to the town warrant, that is a Select Board decision. So it has no bearing what other towns do. This is a Select Board choice.
Correct, but you were just asking if there was any discussion on what happened with the articles. So that's what I was stating. And I'll wrap it up there.
Okay, any discussion on the articles that are still going forward on the town warrants? The senior housing and the amendments to the accessory dwelling units.
So I have some comments.
And I just have a question. Has the cross-check been done with the numbering of the Attorney General? Is that supposed to be done last?
I'm still doing a little bit more of that.
So the line would?
But I think, I think we're good on these three.
Chris Holley?
So I'm very concerned about having enough information on the senior housing and the accessory dwelling units to present them effectively at town meeting. I don't, I think we're gonna get the same pushback we got last fall. And I, therefore, I think we should be passing over these two zoning changes. And maybe all three, maybe adult entertainment also, until a later town meeting because we're just not able to put forth the information voters need to be able to make good decisions.
Okay, Laura?
I have a comment on the senior housing. There was a meeting which I was not able to attend when there was an insertion of a clause recommending that all units shall be ADA compliant in accordance with the laws of Commonwealth of Mass. And I had asked for some general counsel input on that. I think that is not correctly stated with the intent that we would make all units accessible, meaning the ADA compliance, because I have a concern that that would essentially disallow conversion of existing structures and would have spatial implications to the limits that we've put on in terms of the size of the units. So even though we want more accessibility to happen and we want to make units accommodating reasonable modifications to make them more usable for seniors, there are all levels of mobility among senior populations. And if we limit it to ADA under the kind of strict definition of the ADA rule in terms of door clearances, door hardware, you know, all single level, no steps, accessible routes, that is not what the state law requires right now. They require ADA accessibility in common spaces. And in senior living, not every unit typically in a facility is ADA compliant. Many of them are making accommodations, but they are not ADA compliant in terms of you have to be able to roll a wheelchair in and, you know, no bathtub and all the rest of that. So I just wanted to check on that because I think, even though we're trying to do a good thing here, that could shut down a lot of what we're hoping for, like preservation of older buildings.
Okay.
I have a question along that same vein, which was, I think somewhere I, someone said that the provision that we prohibit 18, those 18 and younger in the units would be a problem. Is that because if you had a facility that was a nursing facility and you had a disabled young adult? Or that they would have, they would meet the, so Becky, Betsy, did you tell me that? Or did I dream that, or?
I didn't put that in. I can look into it.
So I didn't, so that, so that the provision that we said that no one under 18 can live there is legal as far as you know? Town council looks like that?
I don't know, I haven't heard from town council on that.
Okay. I don't know who told me that.
That's another town bylaws, that's, because we're talking about the senior housing bylaw.
Senior, I'm talking about senior housing.
Right.
So anyways, a question without an answer. So I guess I share Chris's concern that the one unifying thing we did hear from the public hearing is that people are engaged, which is good. People are trying to understand zoning, which is good. And that they're looking to the current, for the current zoning. And it's not on the website because it's not done yet understandably because the AG was very late. The other thing I am concerned about is I think people, because it is complicated, are confusing our zoning changes with the 3A zoning. And so I'm concerned that we're potentially shooting ourselves in the foot with some of these questions that we, it's too late to make that change except in your change, for example, except at town meeting four, which we really don't want to do because that makes a confusing matter more confusing. So I would share Chris's suggestion that we pass over senior housing. As much as that pains me.
Senior housing or just ADA, or both?
Well, I'd start with senior housing and then we'll take them one at a time, maybe. I would say, I guess I have, to your point, I have the same concerns about the ADU.
I think Chris said both, so I would just say both.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I share the concern.
Susan, do you have a comment?
Well, I guess I would like to see us have some success with something, which I think would be the adult entertainment. I have not heard any negative comments about how we structured that bylaw or whether we left something out or something shouldn't be in there. And it would, and the Select Board has supported that particular warrant. So I'd like to see that one go forward.
And anyone else before I go back?
A question at this point, if we decide that we don't want to, it's already in the booklet, it's already maybe potentially being passed on the floor, how does that communication work between the planning board and the Select Board? Will it still be advanced on the floor if we decide no? It's your choice, I mean, you basically just said it's your fault.
If I may, Ron. Thank you. It's, the Select Board didn't act on the other two because, again, our concerns were with the timing of the response from the AG. We also don't want to be inappropriately usurping the function of the planning board. So it's, if it goes, if it, if you all choose to pass over it, then when we get to town meeting, that would be your stance. And the Select Board would make their comments at the same time. So yes, you can pass it over on the floor.
I think that's not my question. My question is, could we pass it over, but you still advance it? But that was really fine.
No.
Okay, I just want to make, clear that up.
Do you know?
We could, but we won't. We wouldn't.
Sorry, go ahead, Morgan.
Do you know when the Ad Boy Scouts, or Scouts assembling booklets this year?
I am not sure.
Alan, you have?
I think, we mailed last time.
Alan, you may know that answer.
No, they were delivered by, they were delivered.
You're on mute, Alan.
I don't know the answer to the question about who is doing the distribution, but I did want to comment on the question of passing over or not. Traditionally, what we do is that I will recognize the planning board as the sponsors of the articles, and they will have the choice as to whether to move to pass over or to take action. That's regardless of what the Selectment's recommendation is. So I will recognize the planning board first to make the main motion, whether it's to take action or to pass over those articles.
Greg, did you have a comment?
Thanks, I just say that the Scouts are gearing up to deliver both the head report and the planning committee report. They'll be assembled in the packets this weekend and next Monday, and then deliveries starting next week.
So the reason I ask that, the reason I ask that is to answer Christine's question. It would be possible to insert, and insert as says the planning board will move to pass over articles A and B, whichever, whatever the true numbers are, if we chose to do that, I would think.
Might be too late.
Well, it's a matter of taking.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a possibility, anyway.
We might, if we decide to pass over, we may want to publicize.
Yeah.
Our intentions.
Yeah, Ron, thanks. I agree, it would be a very good thing if you would publicize your intention to pass over ahead of time because it may make for an easier reading if we do that.
We'd have to inform like Times and the Cricket. Any other comments on this?
I do have one other comment, and this is, I know this issue is closed, but I do want to just, and I didn't attend the Select Board meeting, so shame on me. But had I attended, I would have said to the Select Board that the Section 12 was really the finishing part of recodification. And I do think that to not have associate members leaves us very vulnerable. I think it's one of the most vulnerable pieces that we were plugging. But we'll take it up in the fall, and that's, so.
And the good thing is, most of these have been vetted pretty well by us, and we can put in changes still and make them even better, so.
So.
Any, Laura?
Just a question really, because I was not at the public hearing either. So it sounds like there might be these two sections that we're passing over with the planning board decides to do that for ADUs and senior housing now. But we feel we've all vetted it pretty well. So is it a matter of, we heard from people, people are confused, this is getting muddied up with the 40A, the MBT housing, and we want to communicate the difference? Or we just want to stagger the timing of the two discussions, or just tell you a little more about it?
Take board input on that.
I think the other thing that we heard is that the website was updated only like two days before the public hearing. So that was a concern that we heard from folks, so.
I have a procedure question. Just quickly looked at the website. Are we guaranteed, are we definitely having a full town meeting? Is that normal? It seems to be normal lately, but is that something that we can count on?
Greg, do you know if we're definitely having a full town meeting?
Well, it's, you know, it's very likely. I would say that the Select Board would be going to commit to that if there is a strong need. I will also note that there could be a special town meeting later this spring or early summer, depending on how budgets are voted. So I would encourage the planning board to keep working as hard as you can on finalizing whatever amendments that you feel are necessary, not to wait, and to keep up.
I think that's fair. I guess the question is, it seems like maybe financially, bringing an amendment may not be prudent for our town. I was just, if it's the only thing on the agenda, maybe we shouldn't be bringing that. That seems like an awful expense for something like that.
So I'll make a motion to, to pass, to at least to pass, to move to pass over the senior housing bylaw changes and the accessory dwelling unit regulations at the next town meeting.
I'll second that.
At the annual town meeting.
Okay, motion's been made to pass over those two amendments, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Take a roll.
Just, I'm sorry, for the discussion, just, we've all been working really hard on this. And I, so we're concerned that we, people aren't ready to, people aren't, people don't understand it well enough, right? So we've, we've all entered this, spent a lot of time, and got to a place where we voted it, but we think that people just don't understand. And that's the benefit. And there remain some issues, like the ADA, like potentially this 18-year-olds and, okay. Yeah, I'm only asking because I can see both sides of delaying and delaying and delaying these amendments when our zoning changes are sorely in need of some updating, such as, you know, allowing senior housing.
I will say that as soon as we get the approved language from the AG, we can then put our, and finalize the amendments or the new zoning. We can then put a lot of material on the website, explain what's different, why we're making the changes. All that is ready to go, which is.
So that's what's dependent on, the AG is actually posting all of the changes? We have the comments back from the AG, but they need to be incorporated. So we have a comprehensive set of zoning. And because we made a lot of changes. Yep. In April last year and November last year, there's a, and there were some of those changes were not fully, another problem we had is that not all of the changes made it into the version that was on the website. There were some omissions, so. So we're basically waiting for the AG to give us. We're waiting to implement the AG's approval, which had conditions, is that correct?
Which is in process.
Right, which is in process, but not complete. And then we'll give us a fully cleaned up version of, here it is, here's the existing zoning, and then we make changes from there.
Exactly.
I think it's important to remember that we have reordered, gotten new sections one through four and six, and, you know, updated a whole bunch of definitions and other things that was the, the original intent made a lot of things clearer, so. Is it still, is it perfect? Absolutely. Right, and I know if we wait for perfection, we'll never get there. We're human. But I, I guess I would say, just as a last consideration, it's the right thing to do right now for going through the sort of stepwise process is we will need to think ahead about what's the timing of the zoning changes with the 40A so that we, you know, do we want to bring those together, or do we want to separate them?
We want to separate them.
So as not to muddy the water. And I agree, we want to separate them, so, but that's going to start to stack up too, so.
But it's interesting that Greg mentioned there may be a special town meeting later in the early summer, in which case we could probably get Section 12, maybe. Negotiate a settlement with the Select Board and finalize that piece as well so we can actually do some good sooner than we might think.
Yeah, I, I hear where you're coming from with wanting this to be clear, and I can accept that reasoning. I think there's a real need for some of these changes, and senior housing being certainly one of them. So I would be reluctant to pass it on, but I hear where you're coming from.
I would, I would just add, once we vote on this, that whether it's this meeting or next meeting, we put a plan in place of what the public outreach is going to be. Hopefully, some of the things that were voiced that we can provide to the residents that.
Absolutely.
Today we have not.
Alan, you have a question on process or a thought on process before we vote?
No, it's not a question on process. I can understand Laura's frustration at not bringing all of this forward sooner rather than later because I know how hard all of you have worked. And I think I can speak for most citizens in Manchester, maybe not all, but most, in saying we owe you a great vote of thanks for all the work you have done to update and modernize and remove the confusion from our zoning bylaws. You've all done a great job, and I thank you.
Thank you, Alan, that was very nice.
Ms. Delicio, you had a comment?
I do. So Betsy sent out an email or memo about timing of town meetings. Are we going to discuss that at some time, or is this appropriate? Because I am concerned, our general bylaws do dictate that there are 60 days before a regular town meeting. And I think that we keep pushing this to the deadline. And if you look at other communities, they honor that 60 days, and it gives the people time to digest it. Like bringing this forward, you know, 21 days before a town meeting is just too rushed. So I guess I wanted to take a look at the bylaws, make sure that the Selectmen are aware that there's been an interpretation that that only applies to citizens' petitions. But if you take a look across the board, communities use those 60 days because they're complicated issues. So I just wanted to make sure that we're not using the same timeline that we've been doing for the last two years. Again, that we agree to something that's more reasonable.
And looking at your timeline, I mean, we got to get started immediately.
It's pretty sobering, and I will say that.
We got to stop much earlier.
Most communities are in the same boat as Manchester.
We have bylaws that we're not abiding by, that's all I'm saying. And I don't know, public hearings, we don't allow times for the public, the comments to be incorporated. We wait to the last minute for a public hearing that doesn't allow us to incorporate something. We can't produce another document to let the public look at it again. I mean, other communities have version one, version two, after the public has given input, we.
Christina, I appreciate your comments. Let's just vote this motion.
I'm just asking when we're going to talk about the timeline. That was my question.
I can put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Next meeting, or is it in part of your?
Well, it's, it's, it's in this package, but we can certainly talk about it early in the day.
Yeah, we can talk about it in the next meeting. I can put that in. Any other discussion on the motion to pass over the two articles on accessory amendments to accessory dwelling units and the new senior housing bylaw, 94?
I do have one other comment.
More comments?
Sorry. The current website, for those, anybody who's paying attention online, the current website does have the drafts that we're passing over, but they are out there. To Christina's point, their drafts are there for people now in the way that they were not before, in a timely way before the public hearing. So we're started.
Okay, any more comments? Otherwise, we'll vote to pass over those two articles. Ms. Tenny?
Yes, pass.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Holley?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Filbrick?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
The chair votes, yes. Okay, so we go pass over those two, and then on adult entertainment, we will continue, I believe, to keep that in. Is there any objections to that? Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is the, any updates on the MBTA community, Section 3A?
So I did put in my staff memo that I'm working with Sue Croft on submission of a $60,000 grant to hire a consultant to help us with the analysis for the MBTA zoning. And that grant is due on Friday. I've given her pretty much my final language today. So I will touch base with her tomorrow, and we'll see where we are. Most communities' last grant round, this is through, this is through kind of the common grant process that the state has. Most communities ended up applying for anywhere from $50,000 to $75,000. So, and this would be specifically to deal with the mapping and the Excel spreadsheet coordination.
So it's, you're thinking of one consultant you're hiring?
It would probably be one consultant, yeah.
Okay, any comments or questions on the MBT, Ms. Foley?
So is that through their One Stop? Is this the one?
It's through One Stop.
So you, do you know which grant bucket that falls under? So is this separate from the MAPC application?
It's separate from the MAPC. And I believe that One Stop, if we're granted the funds, there's a bunch of different consultants that have been approved by the state to do this type of work. So we either do an RFP, and, which takes. We either do an RFP and, which takes a bit of time to do and then. We put it out there on the street for comment or else we look at who is a specialist. In housing and particularly housing for this type of analysis and has mapping capabilities and then we go from there.
So I noticed on the, um, the proposed budget for this town meeting, there's a. Um, ask for thirty-seven thousand five hundred land management for three A. Um, what would that thirty-seven thousand five hundred be for?
I don't know what that is.
Greg, Greg, do you have that answer for that rent management?
Sure, that was there, we put that in in case we needed to match, if we had to have a matching component to the grants, depending on which grant we awarded, some have a matching element, some do not. So it was put in there just in case we needed some matching funds.
For the grant, okay, and just my last question is looking at the MBTA project timeline, um, we're already kind of way behind?
No, we're not, no, we're not, we were always going to start after town meeting.
Okay, so we shouldn't go by this timeline?
Um. No, it's, it's, I mean, I'm in the process of data gathering. Um, so I'm anticipating that once town meeting is over and the dust settles a little bit, we'll be able to just move right into it. Um, we still don't have a task force totally assigned yet. Um, I'm not sure when that's going to be completed, but I'm anticipating right after town meeting, having a series of meetings.
Okay, um, okay, so, but per this timeline, we're behind, but we shouldn't go by this.
I, I don't, I haven't looked at that timeline for a while, but I am doing research.
Okay, but the consultant wouldn't get hired until July?
Consultant, um, so this grant, these grant funds under One Stop, the money wouldn't be available until July. And I'm not sure on the MAPC TAP grant that we applied for, I'm not sure when that money becomes available. But I can find out.
So does it come down to then the board selecting whether it's MAPC or this other consultant to choose?
Well, um, if we get the TAP funds, um, that I believe is MAPC, um, funded, so, um.
The MAPC staff or MAPC funded?
It's MAPC staff, I believe as well, so, um. I know there's some concern about MAPC, I'm not sure why, but, um. We decided to apply for this one under One Stop because it was a larger grant and we hadn't heard on the TAP grant.
Yeah, I'm just questioning when the, it, the decision gets made of which direction to go under the One Stop or under TAP.
Well, I'm assuming that the, uh, task force with Greg and others would be making that determination.
I think it's great you're applying for the funds.
Any thoughts on who should make that decision?
I just, I, I've just never heard of a task force having the fiscal responsibility for that, um. So that's my concern.
So the water management task force has funds and they hired a consultant.
Yeah, and that, that, but that's falling under land management, the land management is asking for those funds, um.
So I. Seems to me the task, it makes a lot of sense for the task force to hire and oversee the consultant.
The select board is responsible for those funds, they authorize them for the task force, the water.
So I think it has to be attached to a board, um, I'm just. You know, it could be the select board, the planning board, it's got to be a taskable board. I have a question about the thirty-seven too, is that available in case we do not get any grant money and when could we spend it? Greg, through the chair.
Greg, is that money available? Thirty-seven thousand?
I, I don't, I don't have the list in front of me if that was from balance or, uh, general taxation. Um, I just only have that in front of me, but I can, I can double check, so if that's from balance, it'd be available the next day.
Okay.
I think the question if I, is, can the task force or can the, if we don't get the grant, if, uh, can that thirty-seven thousand be used? For understanding the three A, um, requirements or is it only for matching?
No, it could be used if, if, if no grants came through or grants didn't require a matching fund, it could still be used.
Okay, great.
It's fun balance.
Okay, thanks for the update.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I see Addy is on, um, Addy, welcome. Right now, we're going to get a presentation by MAPC on the traffic study, um, I want to introduce this, um, let's see, just let me.
So, um, there was a traffic study that was done by MAPC, as I understand it, they used a survey. That was completed by, um, the downtown improvement group. Um, and I just got that, that, the, the actual survey, um, information. Mary had requested it, so it's on SharePoint, um, so MAPC used that data, um, to work on a study. The. There was some additional concern about if we, um, had a couple of places downtown, um, for, say, the MBTA zoning. Or if there were other developments, um. Would, could we plug in some figures to kind of see if we could get some additional data? Um, at this point in time, since we're a little behind, uh, or we're not clear on where. Or if those town center locations may generate or we may have a zoning area to consider. Um, MAPC has basically said that they, they want to close up this study, but they're more than willing to come back. And if we give them some definitive sites, they will run some models for us. So I think that's a very generous stance for them to take, um, and, um, in the meantime, Addy has taken. Um, the data or questions that several board members have had and has worked to integrate them into, um, the study. So, um, Addy is prepared to do a short presentation and then, um, if board members have any questions or comments. Um, that would be it.
So I just have a clarifying question, I think I also asked a few meetings ago about the downtown improvement survey. And I was told at that time that there was two completely different things and they were not intertwined, but now in the final report. It's referenced several times, so the survey is nowhere in the scope of work that we signed or this town signed and what we agreed to at town meeting. So I'm a little concerned in when the scope of this changed and I actually conducted interviews, had nothing to do with the survey. I have information from interviews, it was the time that Sue left, I don't know where that information went to, where it is, so I'm concerned about the. Finality of this.
So who was it provided to? The, the information?
I gave it to Sue.
Okay, well, um, I can check.
So I mean, when this was happening, I said I would, I would, and I did, I interviewed about ten businesses, so I don't know where that information is. And I don't know how downtown improvement.
If we pass, could you, instead of trying to have that, um, that's the search for it, maybe you could resend it? I mean.
But, uh, there was, there's other businesses that were interviewed, so I don't see that information, my, the whole interviews are missing.
Why don't you send that to me and I'll take a look at it and see if Sue even had it, hi, you know?
Well, I had a little, I had a handful, I mean, we divvied them up, there was like four people that were doing them, so I don't see anyone's interview, so it's just not mine's lacking, there's, everyone's is missing.
Okay, well, um. We had asked for comments back in December.
I gave these same comments in a different meeting.
There is survey responses.
On the site?
On the, the parking studies, spring survey, in our packet, there's a MBTA spring twenty-twenty parking surveys.
Surveys are different than commercial business interviews.
Rebecca?
I just, uh, Marlene Dolan is on the downtown improvement and she's got her hand up, so she may well have some.
Marlene, can you help us out on that? Thank you.
Hi, um, I can, thanks, and, uh, you did ask for that last time, Christine, so, um. I, I have been wanting to see those data as well, because as you know, we had also interviewed many of the businesses downtown, so I wanted to combine that data. Um, I did want to clear up the fact that I am, Addy and Sue and I and Linda had worked together to make sure that our survey was complimentary. To Addy's survey, so essentially we wanted to split, split it up very, very quickly. Our job was to talk to the businesses and the people that live downtown and Addy was to look at supply and demand and parking and so forth and we were to bring that all together. So, um, that was the general thing, I haven't seen Sue's either, um, but, um, I will sign up with you, Betsy, to get that data. Uh, so that, uh, because I'd love to see it, I think you guys had some good data there.
Thank you, Marlene.
So I'm, I'm still not sure, I did interviews, I didn't do a survey, so are we just talking apples and oranges or are we using two different words? Are interviews and survey interchangeable? I'm really just don't know. Where the scope would be.
Survey, survey data is, um, you know, survey data and interview data are all data. So the interviews that you all did would be called qualitative, qualitative information, that you would have to content code and find themes. So we'd have to go through all of your data and essentially, uh, come up with the theme similar to what we did with our written in responses. And it would be data that you would combine with the survey data. For one complete report.
Okay, and that hasn't happened?
No, I think what happened is the Sue, Sue, um, when Sue transitioned, I think that stuff is probably with, um. Uh, uh, your counterpart, Betsy, um, Sue Croft, I bet she could say, uh, get it to us. So I'm happy to track that down and get it to people.
So I did just find a, uh, Excel spreadsheet with seven companies interviewed. So it was Antique Table, Boobird, Kayla's, Christina Cresson, is that it?
That's awesome, that's awesome.
Where was this residing?
Um, it was in, uh, a section of her files.
So I did Christina Cresson, I did Boobird, I, I did not do Antique Table, that's what I mean, like, so I don't know who, where this information is. Well, we have a draft final report, so I don't, like, it's part of the scope, so I just.
Well, maybe Addy can finish some of this.
Well, Addy didn't do the survey, he did not do, that was done by the downtown improvement group. So, um, I mean, I have like three or four different downtown parking study interviews, um, interview forms. And, you know, it's like which one is the final one, so, uh, Marlene did send me the final one, but, um.
Yeah, we have, so you have the final one, the downtown improvement is basically information from your customers. And your residents in downtown answering a few key questions that everybody thinks about. And we're happy to talk you through that anytime at all and I would love to see the other data, Christina, that I know that you and Sue put together. Because, um, Christina, for example, uh, spent a lot of time on her response and I would like to see anything else she had to say, she was very valuable. Boobird, I would love to see that, so these are key people, so Addy's study is going to have good data, we just want to add the.
Some additional data.
Data, data.
Okay, um, Addy, um, you can give us your brief presentation and, uh, introduce. You're on mute.
Sure, uh, uh, thank you to the chair and, uh, thanks to the planning board for, for having me back again, I know it's been a, a long road getting here, but I'm excited to share, um. Our final parking study report with you and you all have seen a draft of that in the most recent packet and there'll be a couple of, you know. Updates I'll make to that after this meeting to then share the, the final version with you. Just to speak to, um, what we looked at as part of the, the parking study, uh, we went out and did data collection in the field on two days, as you know. On, um, a May weekday and, uh, July weekend and then we, um, I also referenced some of the work the downtown improvement committee did. With their parking survey that was conducted in May and June of twenty-twenty-two, so you'll see in the recommendation section of the draft report that was circulated. There is a mention that we referenced some of those, uh, survey findings where, uh, relevant. And I do have, and I have, um, a PowerPoint of the survey results that I, I believe Sue had provided to me where I drew some of that from, so, you know, I don't know to what extent. Some of the interviews that were done were or were not, um, reflected in the, in that kind of PowerPoint compilation, but if there is additional. Information that you all think would be relevant, I, I'm happy to think about how to incorporate that after the fact here. So, um, if folks could just, could be the opportunity to share my screen, I can run through a short presentation and then answer any other questions that there might be.
Yeah, you, you have that ability.
Oh, great, uh, just give me a moment here. Can folks see that?
Yes.
Yep.
If you put it in presentation mode, it'll be easier to see.
Yep, just one more. So I'm just go, going back to what I shared a few months ago, uh, when thinking about how we measure parking occupancy in. In downtowns like Manchester by the sea and thinking about what a key benchmark is, uh, which I know a number of you were interested in. That eighty-five percent threshold is really kind of seen as a key benchmark for parking occupancy. This is, um, a number that's used by Donald Schelp, who's a professor of urban planning at UCLA, who has extensively researched these issues. And based upon his research, um, eighty-five percent parking occupancy is generally considered the sign of a quote-unquote healthy parking district. The idea here being that there's strong demand, but there's enough available supply to avoid the negative consequences of drivers circling around looking for parking. And while that means, um, you might not always find a spot immediately outside your, uh, desired destination. It does mean that in most instances, without too much trouble, you should be able to find a spot, um, within a few minutes, that's within a short walk of your ultimate destination. So this is a key benchmark that guided our study and, uh, we found that parking occupancy was consistently below eighty-five percent in downtown Manchester by the sea. Uh, the average occupancy was thirty-nine percent on, uh, the Tuesday, May twenty-fourth and the average rose to fifty percent. On Saturday, uh, July sixteenth, when we were trying to see how, uh, demand for beach parking amongst other things on a busy summer weekend might impact the parking demand downtown. And so here are a couple of the, um, peak occupancy maps that I shared last time, just again for reference. On the weekday peak in May, uh, one P M, the peak occupancy across, um, the entire downtown study area was fifty percent. You can see that there was a variation on some of the on-street and off-street locations, uh, by that color-coded legend, but the overall average was fifty percent. And, um, seventy-one percent on the peak summer Saturday, again at one P M, so you can see, um, a lot more on-street utilization in particular. At that time, but still, uh, well below the eighty-five, uh, percent threshold. And so coming back to some of the recommendations that we came up with, I, I shared some of these in preliminary fashion last time, but want to share them in more concrete terms with you now. Uh, divided into thinking about both on-street parking management and as well as off-street parking management. For on-street, there were a number of areas where, uh, we felt that the parking could be made more visible, there's some areas in the downtown, like on. Beach Street where, uh, the parking spaces are very well marked, but other areas like on Summer Street, kind of towards the edge of the downtown as well as on Route one twenty-seven. Where those spaces aren't very clearly marked, so by marking those spaces better, you might increase their visibility and thus get more utilization of some of those parking spaces. And thinking about, uh, enhancing signage to make a lot of the on-street parking more visible is, is part of that as well. So thinking about pavement markings and signage, how that can enhance the on-street parking visibility. So thinking about pavement markings and signage, how that can enhance the on-street parking visibility. A few other on-street parking issues. I know a number of you had questions about the number handicap spaces and whether it was sufficient for the downtown. There's 125 on-street parking spaces in the downtown and only four handicap spaces currently, which is one short of the number you would want for that level of on-street parking. Massachusetts Architectural Access Board guidelines recommend five handicap parking spaces for every 100 to 150 parking spaces total you might have. So if you were to add another handicap parking space potentially on Summer Street or Union Street to provide another option in the core of kind of your business district, that would bring you in line with those MAB recommendations. So that speaks to the handicap, handicap parking issue that some of you were interested to learn more about. There could also be opportunities to increase parking enforcement on Route 127 between Beach Street and Washington Street. This was the one portion of the study area where cars on average parked for longer than the two-hour posted duration limit. You actually had pretty good parking turnover throughout the study area, even without parking meters. But that one area, for whatever reason, didn't see as much turnover as other portions of the study area. So that could be an area that you might consider targeting for additional enforcement if you are concerned about increasing turnover there. And then I think we saw both through the survey results from the Downtown Improvement Committee, as well as our own field observations, that the long-term business and employee parking, as well as resident parking, is an, is an issue. We did observe a number of instances where people would park in an on-street space for two hours and then they would just move a spot or two up for another two hours, which clearly indicates that they're moving their car every two hours to get along, to get around the posted on-street two-hour limit. So what are the opportunities to designate more spaces for long-term resident and employee parking in the off-street lots or perhaps toward the edges of downtown? And that frees up the on-street spaces for more of that short-term parking and turnover that you want to see to encourage on visitors in the downtown area. So those are some of our on-street recommendations. And then for the off-street parking, we, we think there's a lot of opportunities to potentially think about how you simplify and consolidate the regulations in the off-street lots. We documented 15 different types of parking restrictions across the four off-street parking lots that we surveyed as part of the study. So, you know, that creates a lot of confusion for visitors, for residents. So what are the opportunities to simplify that? This was another element that the Downtown Improvement Committee identified as well. How do we assess signage in all of the off-street parking lots and enhance that signage to improve visibility and help people better understand what the different types of regulations are? We also think there's opportunities to assess the utilization of the existing resident and business parking sticker and placard programs. Our parking study did not assess whether people parked in those particular types of spaces were in fact utilizing the correct placard in question. We do have anecdotal information from the parking enforcement staff in town that there are a lot of people who, who are parking in the wrong spaces and that's a lot of, you have a lot of non-residents who are parking in resident spaces. So how can we, you know, take a closer look at how those programs are in fact being utilized and whether there might be opportunities to designate additional business or resident spaces in these public parking lots or potentially leasing spaces in the 40 Beach Street lot? So we do see opportunities to improve the management of those programs as part of off-street parking recommendations. And of course, related to that, this is a little further down on the list, but exploring opportunities to better educate downtown residents and businesses to increase usage of those sticker and placard programs. Based on the survey results, it sounds like a lot of people aren't currently utilizing those programs or might not be aware of them. So there can be additional opportunities there. I mentioned the updating a map of the Town Hall parking lot. This was a recommendation from the Downtown Improvement Committee. We could potentially extend this to other parking areas in the downtown so that you have resources out there that can be shared with local residents and businesses and posted on the town website to really make people aware of where the different parking restrictions are, what are the different programs that they can be taking advantage of. We see a lot of opportunities to enhance the wayfinding and pedestrian connections to and from the off-street parking lots, especially that connection between Town Hall and Beach Street. I know there's a lot of interest there, so how can we make these spaces more visible? How can we have better signage to direct people between these different connections? And then last on the list there is exploring opportunities for shared parking agreements with other local institutions and businesses, like the American Legion, First Paris Church, Santander Bank, to promote peak parking options during certain events. And of course, there's already precedent for this with some of the beach parking that gets managed by the Boy Scouts in the 40 Beach Street lot and the fact that the Beach, 40 Beach Street condo association already leases some of those spaces to the MBTA. Could there be more opportunities to think about creating additional parking options through agreements with some of these other institutions and potentially with the 40 Beach Street as well? And so that gets us to our next steps. We hope you'll consider implementing any of these study recommendations to make the best use of your parking assets that you already have. In the longer term, you'll certainly want to keep an eye on changing patterns with residential and commercial occupancy downtown. And of course, long-term redevelopment, which includes how you all might be thinking about the MBTA multifamily zoning requirement. I know this has come up previously as part of our conversations around the parking study and I heard some of the discussion when I tuned in just before starting my presentation here. You know, these are, these might all impact parking demand downtown. For the time being, we didn't attempt to make any recommendations or modeling as we had initially thought we might as part of the study, but we understand that you might come back to us later to think about how you might model some of those multifamily scenarios in and around the downtown. And hopefully, the parking data that we gathered as part of this study can help you all understand whether the downtown could absorb additional parking demand or whether you might need additional mitigation measures or supply measures down the road. So, so we can certainly revisit that as the need arises. And then last but not least, we hope you'll consider pushing future developers to incorporate transportation demand management measures to make sure that they're providing mitigation for parking, providing, you know, bike, things like bicycle parking, multimodal options to enable folks to access the downtown, potential shuttle buses to the commuter rail station to meet additional demand that might arise there. So these are some of the options that you have at your disposal to think about the future of parking and demand in downtown Manchester by the Sea. So I'll stop there. You know, the draft report I shared goes into more detail on a lot of these pieces. And I appreciate the comments that folks have provided. You know, I've tried to address those in the studies to the best of my ability, but of course, I'm happy to make any additional tweaks and to address any questions now as well.
Okay, thank you, Addie. Any questions for Addie from the board? Laura?
Hi, Addie. Thanks for your presentation. A couple of questions. One is, I'd be interested to hear more about kind of best practices in TDM development, transportation demand. If there are other North Shore towns, like I think of the town of Rockport having some satellite lots and shuttle buses to get people to them or neighborhood districts or, you know, whatever it might be, getting people downtown from further out. So if you have any kind of examples, just to illustrate that a little further, I'd be interested in hearing that. And one question I did have about the utility of that 85%, I'm definitely familiar with that benchmark of being a kind of healthy rate of parking in terms of efficiency. I do want to say there's also, if you get, you don't want it to be too difficult. So more than 85% utility is hard for people to find spaces, but I think you also don't want it to fall too low either because if we have too much surface parking, that doesn't benefit the downtown either in terms of having wide expanses of space that are mostly vacant and look like surface parking lots that are not amenity to the downtown. But to that end, I did have a question about the MBTA parking, which was part of the count. If you, as I understand, we counted those cars. I know I was in the MBTA parking lot counting cars during the survey part of the study. And if you, if you eliminated the MBTA parking from your overall parking count, did you look at that and what that would do to the efficiency? Because it does seem like we're counting that and yet we, you don't really park there unless you're parking for the MBTA specifically for that use.
Yeah, that, that's a great question, Laura. To your point about TDM, you know, we can definitely circle back with you know, some more details on, on best practices. And I would imagine, you know, Salem, you know, obviously they're in a much more urban context than, than you all are, but they would have some, you know, they might have some TDM measures that might be worth looking at. But I can certainly keep you posted if there are other examples from the, the North Shore that we might want to look at. But to your question about the MBTA commuter parking, I didn't look at that one specifically, but Marlene did have a similar question about a number of the reserved spaces in the 40 Beach Street parking lot. And I did run the numbers in a few different configurations, looking at how, how are the numbers impacted if you remove the parking lots from the count and you look at just the on-street spaces? And what I found is when you take some of the parking lots out of the equation, the percentages do go up, but it's only by a few percentage points. So it's not enough to really significantly impact the, the study findings. You know, you don't get suddenly above the 85% threshold just because you remove a segment of the parking lots here, here and there. So, you know, the numbers don't really change all that much. So I do feel confident in the overall study findings. Even though, you know, they're presented in an aggregate fashion in this report, when you do disaggregate it, you find the numbers don't shift all that much.
That's really helpful and I, I didn't expect that to be the answer. I thought once we eliminated some of the, you know, off-street parking lots, that that might tilt that number up higher, past 85%. So it would be, I think it might be worth a clarification in the final report that kind of no matter how you slice it, whether you're looking just at on-street parking or on-street parking plus these off-street parking lots, that the rate is coming up at about 85%. Because I think that, a couple of us have wondered that already in terms of how much the off-street parking is tilting it. It sounds like it's, it isn't really substantive.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to note that in the final report. Thank you.
Thanks, Addie.
Yeah, just to, to tag on to what Laura was saying, I had the same question of if you took out, I think it's Harbor Parking Lot, which includes the MBTA, but also designated spots for condominiums that are there. So if we took those out, kind of what those numbers were, and I think it would be good if in the final draft, if we could see, separate out on-street parking, parking, you know, how many spaces and then versus off-street parking and what the percentages are. Because on page seven, you note that in the busy times, that there's a, a 100% or above occupancy. So I'm wondering if we could target those areas and try to find some solution, which was most of Beach Street and sections of Summer Street and sections of Bridge Street. So if those were the, at 100%, I would think those would be our target areas to look at for some resolution. And is there any, another question is if there any way to determine if these parking spots are being utilized by residents or visitors? Because I think if we can determine if on-street parking is perhaps being used by residents, how we can solve that to open up those spots? And then just one other thing, the Maynard is still referenced in a few places here, so I think you want to take that out.
Thanks, yeah. I, I, I did make, make that change and apologize for the error, for that Maynard was erroneously listed. I was working off on, in an old template and putting this report together, but I, I missed it in a couple places.
Yeah, it's in a few places, so.
I, I already corrected that, so I appreciate the catch. And then to your, was there a previous question? I apologize. There are a few other things there.
Residents versus.
Oh, yeah, if we can determine, you know, residents versus visitors because, you know, I think what's probably happening in certain sections of town is on-street parking is being used by residents because they don't have the off-street parking. And so if that's taking up spots for visitors, you know, so if we can kind of solve the resident parking, which opens it up for visitor parking, just to kind of see those numbers and separate out the on-street versus off-street.
Yeah, so that, that was one limitation of this study is that when we were going out and gathering the parking data in the field, we didn't examine whether the cars in question were using, had the resident stickers or whether they were using the business placards. So we weren't kind of, we weren't verifying whether, you know, they were parked where they actually should be. I think I mentioned earlier, and this is documented in the report as well, that anecdotally, from what we've heard from town staff, that, you know, there are a lot of violations of non-residents parking in, in resident spaces and that the Town Hall lot is, is kind of seen as confusing for a lot of residents and, and visitors as well in terms of those spaces not being clearly demarcated. So we unfortunately weren't able to gather that data as part of this study, but we, I think we know it's an issue that needs to be addressed and, you know, and perhaps that's, you know, maybe something that the Downtown Improvement Committee or other stakeholders in town could look into more, you know, you were to go out on a day and just see what stickers are people utilizing and which spots, that, that could provide some additional insights that can complement the body of work that we did. But unfortunately, we weren't able to do that for the purposes of this study.
So.
Christina?
So I guess the, I took a quick look at the high cost of free parking. And I guess Donald Shoup is a very well-renowned, you know, parking expert. But a lot of his work is concentrated in California and this 85% of parking occupancy. I mean, we are a small seaside community and there are certain areas that are resident only. So I guess to me, not knowing who's using these and when is kind of critical to this 85%. And the lots that are being shown are resident only. So to use those numbers in the percentages, I think it's skewing it. So I guess 85% of all, and if it's all, then, or business? Because businesses are using some of these lots as satellites for employees, but not visitor. So I, I'm not sure where the numbers, the calculations are coming from. I guess that's my concern.
Yeah, again, there's, I think there's, there's a number of different ways to, to break down the numbers, looking at, you know, on-street versus off-street or different types of regulations within, within the lots. I mean, I know that, like I said earlier, there's a lot of different parking restrictions within the, the parking lots. You know, some of those spaces are private, some of those spaces, like the resident spaces or the business spaces, aren't necessarily open to all residents or all businesses or visitors to, to the downtown. But in a few different configurations, you know, when, when you take certain spaces out, again, it doesn't, it really doesn't skew the numbers up by more than a few percentage points. So you really aren't running up against that, that 85% threshold. So if there are some more specific breakdowns that people are, are interested in, I can, I can run those numbers and, and share those back. But I would say that from, you know, everything that I looked into, you really aren't running up against that threshold here.
I guess if these numbers are going to be used to promote whether we can or cannot accept some zoning changes under this 40A, are, I think it's very important that we have all of those different situations because not having, whether these are residents in these resident-only lots, I do think that the numbers, and I, I, I trust your judgment, but I actually would like to see them. So I guess I will, maybe if I have the authority to send you a question regarding what specific lots in the days that, if you took out the resident-only and placard-only lot, what that number would look like?
Maybe Betsy, would, would the best way to address this be if Christine were to send her questions to you and you pass those along to me, would that address the issue?
She can pass the question on to the chair or to me and we can forward it to you. I will say that last week, there was a discussion among the chief of police, the town administrator, members of the Downtown Improvement Committee, myself, couple of others, to talk about how to deal with summer parking. And we know that a number of, actually Ms. Jacks was there too, sorry. And what we did find out was that the police department is going to be hiring some summer help for enforcement issue. What I think Adi's study or the Downtown Improvement Study indicates is a lot of business owners and their employees park in downtown, which is where you'd obviously want your clients to come and park. So we are going to try to promote further the, the remote lots that are available. And actually, the Downtown Improvement Committee, over the next month, is going to be doing a study to see where there are lots that are underutilized. So for example, church lots or school lots or a number of different lots that could accommodate. or a number of different lots that could accommodate remote parking for local businesses who are there all day. So owners or employees who might be there all day and can certainly walk five minutes to get to the store. And then that opens up a lot of parking for consumers. And this is a very common thing in traffic studies where, and parking studies, where property owners, business owners want to park in front of the store that they own. We did this study in Winchester.
I guess, yeah, that all makes sense, I guess. You know, a draft report that references a study that we just received, you know, the information, you know, today. And we've asked for this information. I really do feel like this board is not being kept in the loop. I mean, this was a presentation a few days ago, it looks like. So I don't understand why, you know, these two boards aren't working together. If we hired and authorized this study, it's being, the Downtown Improvement is being referenced in this, why, I feel like we're actually being quite excluded from the information, so.
That is not done purposefully. I will tell you that.
Excuse me, I wasn't finished.
Okay.
But I really do feel like we're talking about governments and communication, that we really need better governance in this particular aspect. I mean, this sounds like a group project, but neither groups have actually communicated about either one of these studies. So nothing about purposefully, I'm just saying we're doing a really bad job of communicating. So, I mean, it's hard to comment on this when we just get information that's been referenced, you know, four or five times in the document. So I think it's unfair to ask for real comments when we just got the information.
Becky, you have a comment?
I do, Becky Jakes, current chair, select board. Part of this does come down to the lanes we each have and what is in our, or under our purview. It is, the select board is working on governance and trying to make sure that we reduce unnecessary omissions. We're working to see, and that's why we had a meeting today with the chairs, which is to try to reduce the lack of working together, getting much more, sorry about this. My mind is just going to sleep a little bit, but it seems.
Clarity, Betsy, you guys need to figure out who's responsible for which decision lanes. That's, I think, the thing that we're looking for, being part of the problem.
So what I'm getting at is, yes, there is information overlap, not necessarily governance overlap. But we are working on this, trying to make it better. There's no deliberate, anybody being left out of a loop.
Well, I mean, there was a meeting on March 9th, which, you know, this survey was referenced in a report that we're supposed to comment on, and we just got the information today. So I do feel like we're being kept left out. I mean, honestly, right? I mean, I'm not crazy here.
I have a suggestion, Mr. Chairman. Can we invite the Downtown Improvement Committee to a media, joint meeting with the planning board and lay out these issues on the table? Because there's going to be, a lot more of this is going to be happening over the next two years. There's a huge project about to happen downtown, where they could cut off the downtown, one end from the other, for six months to a year. You should be involved in that, so should they. I think we can have a meeting of the minds, in a joint meeting, we can work out a lot of these problems.
I would agree with that, Chris and I. Downtown Improvement, reading years prior before I got on the planning board, used to kind of not report to the planning board, but would update the planning board on things, and then that fell to the wayside. I don't know why.
So what would be the agenda on the joint meeting? What are you proposing we talk about?
I think the parking, the parking study could be one. There are traffic, they're talking about traffic improvements downtown, runway improvements, that could be another topic. You could be talking about the 3A zoning and their stance on multifamily housing downtown. I'm not suggesting this happens tomorrow, but I think it's going to be ongoing dialogue between the two committees.
You might want to include the pedestrian and bike committee in that.
Okay, good suggestions.
Laura Hatterhand first. So we're being asked to comment on the MAPC report, which is a quantitative survey, which has been completed. We didn't get it just today. We've had it for a long time. We've had more than ample opportunity to make comments, which many of us have made. And if we're uncomfortable with referencing the qualitative survey in the summary of the report, then let's strike it and have the two be freestanding elements. That none of the interviews in question, I think, negate or, you know, bolster the information that's in this quantitative survey. So I would like to propose that rather than pushing this off again, we comment on the quantitative results of the survey to Audie and MAPC, let them close it out. It's good information. We shouldn't table this to say, well, we think something's missing that is qualitative that somebody else did, and we don't like the fact that they didn't coordinate. That doesn't affect the information in this report. So I would like to suggest that we all finish talking about the material. In the report, set aside for the moment what is not in the scope of the report, which is the qualitative material. And let's please close it out so that we can use it and refer to it in the conversations that are to come. That's my suggestion.
Okay, Sarah?
I was going to say something very similar. And also to point out to people who are not reading the report that there is some really good information here that at least I didn't know. I think a good way of thinking about it, that 85% is a threshold.
The street standard.
And that we don't, we are rarely, at least in the two days that we're surveyed, at that point, maybe just for a couple of hours. And then also, there's a good set of recommendations that are outside of the purview, I would think, of the planning board, probably more in the Downtown Improvement Committee and the select board's jurisdiction to, you know, clarify some parking regulations, stripe the lines, those kinds of things. And that those are really helpful. And for what we asked this to be done, I think it's a good, a good survey. And I appreciate MAPC's hard work on this.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for that. And I would just say, I think it was asked earlier in this process that we, that MAPC consider referencing the Downtown Improvement Committee body of work. So I did try to do that here. It sounds like there have been some communication issues, which I think are above my purview here. But insofar as I feel like, you know, some of what the Downtown Improvement Committee did, you know, is quite complimentary to the work, some of the findings that we came up with, and some of the recommendations that we made. You know, it could be helpful for us to continue to reference them, but I'm happy to be in touch with Betsy to sort of work out the final details about that. But I just wanted to make sure I was reflecting that as part of this conversation as well.
Okay, thank you.
Isabella? Can I speak?
Sure.
I have an anecdotal comment.
Would you like to state your name?
This relates to Masconomo Street. I go to the rec center on Monday and Thursdays for the strong women weightlifting class, which has usually 20 to 30 women in it. And we have been instructed over and over again not to use the numbered parking spaces that are near alleys and, you know, around there, which always are empty, always. But we are not supposed to use them. So they've even said, if there are no parking spaces where the train parking would normally be, we should go park over by the end of the harbor and walk across the street. But I have never had any sort of parking sticker that says I'm a resident or whatever, like this. I don't quite understand the formats that he's talking about. And they seem to be guarding these parking spaces that nobody is using.
Private property.
Oh, it's private property, so they can just leave it empty. Yep.
I think that's currently, yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, the other thing was, I was at a Tai Chi class, which is taking place on the lawn of the library. And I had never understood how many lumbering, super loud trucks come crashing through our town on a, literally, every 30 seconds, just about. We very often cannot hear ourselves speak because of the number of construction vehicles that are going through the town center of Manchester. It's really rather appalling.
Understood. Same problem on my street. Okay, thank you all. Thank you, Audie.
Thank you, Audie.
Thanks, Betsy, and thanks to the board. And I'll have that, yeah, I'll take some of these comments into account, and I'll have that final report for you all in the coming weeks. So it'll be, you know, just a tweaked version of the draft you've already seen.
Thanks, Audie.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. So proposed public hearing rules and regulations miswhere. You had several items, and you wanted to talk about these and maybe even have a public hearing.
So I've been asked by the town clerk and others about various planning board rules and regulations. So prior to understanding that there's a subcommittee, which Christine, Mary, and Chris are on, based on the fact that the driveway law, curb cut and driveway law has changed. Also, in the discussion with legal counsel, legal counsel feels strongly that the town, the planning board in particular, should have a protocol for 4453G process. And then there's been further discussion of planning board meetings, and then site plan and special permit regulations. There's presently none. And in light of the fact that you have cell signaling coming in probably in April, end of April or early May, to submit an application, I believe pretty strongly that, at a minimum, the site plan and special permit and protocols for 4453G should be in place for when they come in. So doing an analysis of timeframe, and I think the latest that the planning board can hold a public hearing on adoption of such rules and regs would be sometime in the first meeting in April. That being stated, Christine sent out an email about the Planning Board Rules and regs Subcommittee, Subcommittee meeting the next couple of Mondays, or no, next couple of Wednesdays. So I need to understand how, what I've been thinking about dovetails with that Subcommittee.
Yeah, I don't think they've met yet and made any. Christina, can you speak on it?
We met in 2020. Via Zoom, on a really bad platform. And we said, you know, we were high in re-qualification at that time. And then we had all agreed, well, those that were on the board at that time, that we would postpone this until a bulk of re-qualification was done. So there's a few drafts that we've done. They're in SharePoint, I believe.
So you see you guys making some kind of recommendation to us? And you have a date on kind of a schedule on?
We haven't met one. We're meeting Wednesday.
So does it make sense for me to funnel you proposed regulations? And then your group can review them?
No, we have a pretty solid draft.
We do, but I think we're apples and oranges here.
Yeah.
What we've been talking about is more internal to the planning board itself, not how we intersect with special permits or driveways or anything. So what you put together is how we interface with the public and our public processes. So I think the two go hand in hand together and can proceed together as well. I think we should be looking at your drafts and you looking at ours, and we can all be commenting together. And I think we'll end up with a pretty good package of things. But for example, we never talked about how special permits should be reviewed and the fee structure and all those things.
No, Marlene just did that.
Yeah, exactly.
No, but I think actually, it might be a good point. Because if and when the new administrative section goes through, I mean, pretty much every section had, you know, two regulations to be drafted. So I think it could just be an ongoing procedure that the Subcommittee.
I agree, yes, I think that's.
I mean, you don't have anything right now.
No, we don't.
I mean, there's a.
We have some drafts on things.
You have drafts, but you don't have anything on the books.
Nothing on the books. I tried to correct.
So.
So what documents are you referencing?
So we had, Christina had a set of regulations for.
No, you said that Betsy put together. They would go hand in hand.
On the SharePoint, there's a.
So SharePoint, for example, I ended up putting on 4453G.
Oh, I thought you said hiring consultants.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying. Yeah, so it's apples and oranges.
So I would say we make a list of the things we want, we need regulations on. 4455G, which is hiring, 53G is hiring consultants to review special permits. Let's get a public hearing on that one posted immediately.
Well, so what I was thinking of is that we aim for three, four, or five of the ones that are listed on the agenda. So 4453G, I've drafted. Site plan and special permit would be the two other ones. As I recall.
Why wouldn't we just go under Mass General Law for this?
Because legal counsel has advised us that we need a protocol. There is a protocol under Mass General. There is a note under Mass General Law about this. However, legal counsel felt it was more important to have a very clear delineation of how this works and it being adopted by.
So that came out in 2017, and you're just saying that we need it now?
Probably should have been adopted in 2017.
Yeah, because this is.
But the bottom line is that legal counsel is advising us that we really should, the town, the boards, the various special permit granting boards should adopt some protocol or regulation on this.
Is there an economies of scale that this could be a public hearing? We could do a service to the ZDA and the CONCOM by all adopting the same regulations and having one public hearing?
I think you'd have to get them both on board.
But it might be worse.
They could certainly take the planning board's draft and hold a public hearing and adopt it.
Maybe we just have one here.
No, I think you're, I think.
I don't think you can adopt it on behalf of another board, though.
My point is to have one that says for the planning board, one for CONCOM, have one. It's up to you, but it seems like we could have one. It's not so.
My concern is that this needs to happen fairly soon.
So if we need, my point is.
Or what? I'm just, like, or what? Like, not to, like, be really difficult.
Well, I think you're on kind of thin ice in terms of dealing with what you can ask for on the cell signaling project. Because you don't have any regulations.
Do we have a revolving fund established already?
This isn't a revolving fund. It's a special revenue account.
If we want to have a public hearing in less than a month, we got to give the public something, some information.
Right, so the legal notice, the last legal notice has to go in sometime like the 24th or something?
Yeah, but they haven't.
Yeah.
I'm three, I'm three quarters of the way through site plan and special permit.
Oh, okay.
Right. I will have those done this week.
But doesn't the board kind of want to weigh in on this?
Well, the whole purpose of a public hearing, I can get them to you beforehand, but the whole purpose of a public hearing is to get input.
So we can hear the input and then make a discussion, a couple of meetings after. So we can hear the input and then make a discussion, a couple of meetings afterwards. You don't need to incorporate right then.
But if, if the planning board held a public hearing, the first public hearing, the beginning of April, and then held continued or.
It would be, it would be April tenth.
It would be April tenth, and then you would continue that meeting to the following, following, you continue the hearing to the following meeting and hopefully make a decision. If cell signaling comes in the end of April, you still have time. Plus, they have, the board has sixty-five days to hold a public hearing on cell signaling. So that gives you time to finish the adoption process, assuming it takes three meetings to do it.
Is there a protest period after adoption?
No. Well, no, if you have a public hearing and it gets filed with the town clerk.
So you will have write-ups on all five of these things?
Well, I'm gonna pass on the curb cuts because Chris and Mary have been working on that.
Okay.
Nope, nope, nope. I have not been working on that.
Chris has been working on it.
We don't want curb cuts anyway.
Driveway entrances.
Okay. So I can at least do three, if not four.
Okay.
I do have, I really would like to model what the Board of Selectmen do. They have first read, second read. I don't think it's fair for us to take this, make comments. I mean, we need to have some protocols here. We can't just have meetings, look at it, talk about it, and be done. It's, I don't think it's fair to us. I don't think it's fair to the public. I mean, when we talk about things, we think about different things, and the next time, in the next two weeks, things come up in your brain that you didn't hear or think about. Like, this is why we have first and second readings, right? So rushing these things through continually, I don't think is helping anyone. And if we can't speak to these things, I don't think it's fair that the public is expected to speak to them, so.
So I think these need to be. Excuse me.
Presented in a timely manner, which we can read and absorb and think and comment, that's all.
Yeah, why is the April tenth rush date? Why is, why are we rushing?
Because we need to get them in place for cell signaling.
So is cell signaling commuted that they're presenting on a certain day?
May I raise my hand and make a comment?
Okay, we'll go through the chair, and Laura, go ahead.
Thank you. Are these templates, setting aside curb cuts, focusing on the ones that are important to cell signaling in that review? Site plan review.
Special permit.
Special permit.
And forty-four fifty-three G.
And forty-four. So these probably have templates, right? We're not reinventing the wheel here. There are many examples of doing this and the standard requirements for doing that. We're not writing zoning language in terms of change of use or dimensional anything. So if you write these and we review them and discuss whether we want to review them before a public meeting or at a public meeting, it seems to me that this ought to be a simple, straightforward thing for us to all, you to draft, us to look at, and us to pass without, and then say, you know, pencils down, everybody, we got it, it's working, let's pass it. And then we get it in front of cell signaling. But it's not like this needs the same level of education of, you know, we're introducing senior housing or something. It's just process stuff that's gonna enable us to do our jobs.
So you have the forty-four fifty-three G draft that's in SharePoint. I will probably finish site plan and special permit by the end of this week. So I'll ship it out to everybody, and you can take a look.
I think this is great. I think it helps us move things along, and I did not have any comments on your the forty-four fifty-three.
G.
G. And having sat on a planning board years ago where we had many tens of thousands of dollars in those accounts and release them for large subdivisions, it's very important. I think it makes a lot of sense to, there was always some confusion about how it would get released and those kinds of things.
Well, and I will say that I worked in one community who, so it's, it's kept in a special revenue account. And so, for example, if the planning board decides that there's a special project or a special facet of an upcoming development that they need to hire special services on. And they go out and they do that. It's, the funds are requested by, by the board from the applicant. They're put in the special revenue account, and the account, we get an invoice, you know, or a partial invoice. It gets reviewed by the applicant, it gets reviewed by the board, the board approves it. The applicant has X days to review it and approve it. It's a very simple process. That being stated, I've worked for at least two communities where the treasurer didn't understand special revenue accounts and put it in the general fund, and it was a mess. So. The treasurer, I'm sure, has a full understanding of this.
Mr. Chair.
If we think this is pretty boilerplate template stuff, I would agree. I just don't want to get into a point where we don't give the public enough time to digest this.
The public will have at least two meetings, if not three, to review this stuff. These are basically the board's regulations on how they operate in reviewing applications.
So, yeah, and because they're regulations, we can change them at any time if it's not working.
As long as you hold a public hearing.
Yeah.
I think it'd be helpful, as you draft them, if there are decisions that the board should decide, you know, this many days or that many days, or, you know, within the confines of the boilerplate procedures that are common across many communities, where is there discretion? It'd be helpful for, if you could call out those things that are worthy of, of discussion and those things that are, I guess, an omission to call it out would be its, its standard. So I think it's great, and I think we can do a first read at the next meeting and have a hearing at the meeting thereafter. That's it.
So Betsy, have you been in contact with cell signaling? Do you have a date that they're presenting?
With who?
Cell signaling.
It's in April.
I haven't been in contact since they gave.
You just seem like you really want to get this on the books, and so then.
I do want to get it on the books.
Understood. I just was curious if you had been in contact with them, or they, you.
I don't think they're just gonna be here for one meeting, though.
I understand.
Oh, I think they're gonna be here for a number of months.
Correct.
Okay.
So my second follow-up to that was, could you pass through what town council gave you for the advice for these?
I can do that.
What, could you pass through what town council gave you for?
Oh, actually, it was, it was verbally when I was talking with legal counsel about some town meeting articles. We were talking about a bunch of different things, and I was saying that the board needed to adopt some rules and regulations. And her comment, it was Robin Stein of KP Law, and she said to me, while you're at it, address forty-four fifty-three G, because a lot of communities don't, and it's a problem.
Maybe just, I just feel like sometimes maybe we should be kept in the loop of those, maybe include them in your town planners' report, just so we're not hearing them like off the cuff or, you know, just passing.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I have a related comment, but it's not on the regulations. Shall I wait for the question about cell signaling?
Well, I just, we just have the players' report. Go ahead.
Okay. My question is, I think we will be able, we will anticipate having at least certainly a stormwater consultant for cell signaling and some other consultants. And I'm wondering if the board has consultants that have been used in the past, or if we should get a jump on identifying the people who would work for us and find out. I just know that a lot of consultants right now are super busy. And if we have sixty-five days, the stormwater review of a project of that magnitude could take some time. So in particular, stormwater was on my mind. I know that the, for the, both the high school and the elementary school, Bill Jones was used. Who's he with? He's like a, might be an old, he might, he was at Hancock, and. Anyway, Hancock is the cell signal, we often use Hancock, and Hancock is on the cell signaling team, so we can use that.
No, but Bill Jones was good.
Yeah, Bill Jones is quite thorough.
So there's a company in Ipswich that does a lot of municipal plan review.
Well, it might be good to just look around, and if, I don't know if this board would vote to, to select somebody if we need to get three bids, or how that.
You should get three quotes.
Quotes. So probably a scope of services, preliminary scope of services would be good to have, because that, getting the three quotes can take some time, and it just, I just know from my work that these things, that this, so I would think stormwater.
Towns that I've seen already have like pre-qualified consultants, so we could, that's what I was wondering. Could we talk to procurement and maybe just get a list and have pre-authorized consultants? And we, depending on their time and their availability, we can just make that process a little bit easier.
I think it's down to, because.
No, but just future projects, for this one and going forward, not to have to go through this. So we have a group of pre-authorized.
So we don't, the good news is we don't have to go to public bid because it's somebody else's money. But.
You could also do best value. Pardon? You can do best value with public procurement anyway.
Right.
But just having a pre-authorized list.
Yeah, I mean, I know when I worked in Weston, I used, we used a traffic consultant that was MDM, and they were terrific. They're based in.
Well, I think it'd be good if you gathered these all together, and we talked to procurement and see how we can get them pre-authorized.
They're not all have the same specialty, though.
No, but we need, we probably need traffic, stormwater, and at least, and so. But I think it'd be good to at least start a list and maybe find out.
Wildfire study there, you may want to understand the impacts of a heat pump there. A question was asked of me whether there was an environmental study done, a twenty-one E done. I mean, so it starts to add up.
Oh, or stormwater.
Well, if it's only stormwater, I mean, there are a number of firms who are civil engineers and can do stormwater. If we're looking for more disciplines, then there are firms that specialize in kind of sustainability and resiliency. That could be one thematic area, or there are larger multidisciplinary, there's disciplinary firms like Stantec and ADCom that are gonna carry civil, civil engineering.
Traffic.
Uh, maybe traffic, that's often a specialty, but maybe traffic. Sometimes they have in-house landscape architecture disciplines as well. So certainly, traffic from the point of circulation, I think civil engineer could do a lot of that. If we're talking traffic study or parking demand, it's something that's a different specialty. But, yeah, to the point of like, what's the scope? Yeah, I do think a resiliency, sustainability focus would be good for peer review, because that's not necessarily everybody's, you know, working familiarity with that. And so are Arip and Atelier Ten and those kinds of firms that do that work. The other thing is the checking with the building inspector, because presumably it's controlled construction. So I mean, we're a stretch code community, and I can't imagine that he has the time or expertise to ensure compliance with the stretch code. So that might be something that.
I think this project is big enough so that there's a provision in the building code that allows a licensed architect to.
Stamp it.
Stamp it and, and do the control, construction.
Yeah, but.
Do we know if our Board of Health has the in-house expertise for bio level two and impacts?
Yeah, since others possible. So we might want to make a list of the consultants and at least start a list, yeah. I think it's gonna take some time to.
So scope of services, definitely very important.
Right.
Maybe one firm can do a few of them, list, but a list would be a good idea, I think.
I think is there a way to gather some of the initial information that they showed us just to give the consultants an idea of what they're up against or what they were being proposed, so I mean.
If we make a list, that would help.
I'd be willing to work with you on just putting that together, if that's okay. So, great, thank you.
All right, a little off topic, but good, good talk.
We're good on topic. Well, it relates to, it relates to rules and regs, because at the bottom of the rules and regs, there's gonna be something that says additional studies.
Well, saving it for the other, not on the agenda, so.
All right, I, the liaison reports, anyone have anything to report on there?
So I.
Have they met with you, oh?
I have a little bit on housing.
Okay.
So the Affordable Housing Trust, I think it was, put out a RFP for developers to help with the mass housing, I'm sorry, the housing authority sites. And we never got any proposals, and so we've now putting, we're asking town council to review a request for qualifications. So instead of asking developers for a whole proposal as to what they would do, instead, we're just asking for their qualifications. We select the best one based on their qualifications and then set them loose on. We did take the DPW site on Pleasant Street off the list because it's not surplus and confused some of the developers who didn't know whether they were supposed to submit a proposal for that as well. And since it's not surplus, we just thought we should just take it off. So we'll see what happens. We haven't gotten approval yet to release it, but we hope to soon.
Go ahead, Mary.
I just, so I noticed in our current warrant that through the CPC or CPA, whichever funds, it's two hundred and fifty thousand going to Affordable Housing Trust. How much is in that fund now?
About a million dollars, roughly. You could almost buy a house.
Could, you could buy cargo. Cargo Unlimited. Chris, do you know how much they dispersed with rental assistance during COVID?
I can get you those numbers. It was around a hundred thousand, I think. I'm just, top of my head. And most of that was provided by an anonymous donor, so they didn't give into their own funds too much.
Thanks.
Laura. Thanks, Ron. Are you going with, are you the collective going with profit and nonprofit developers? Or how do you, how do you put them together?
Yeah, yeah, profit or non, we hope it's like a nonprofit. We think that'd be better, but we're not limited to it.
Do you have some kind of selection criteria that you're establishing for how you?
Yes, and we're probably, I think we'll probably end up putting a little task force together of representatives of other boards as well to help us evaluate the development teams that could propose.
Is there a kind of radius of, you know, North Shore, Boston area, Massachusetts?
So, I mean, there are the obvious ones like the North Shore CDC, which is a powder house property. There's Harbor Lights, which does projects all around, and there are others as well.
Right. So I think they have to pencil out for us and them, but you probably also want to see examples of the type of, type of communities they build too, right?
Yes, that's right, yeah. We want people who have worked with housing authorities before, who understand mixed financing, which is what this would resolve, and tax credits and so forth. So it's gonna be a complicated thing. All of these developers are used to it, know how to do it.
Right.
Did you go to the water resource?
Oh, I did go to the water resources.
I'm sorry, I've got, just one, I went to the Harbor Light, you know, dinner and talk for the last week. And I actually just went to the first night. The second night was on the forty-eight. But one thing that they brought up, and they went through all that tax stuff, which was a little overwhelming. But one question I've had, and people have asked me about that, and then potentially going forward with senior housing, and if you can't answer this, can't answer this, I think it would be helpful. They made a very big point to say that they pay taxes on their properties, but that's not the norm. So if nonprofits are going into this, say the DPW site people have asked, would that property, if it was a nonprofit, be tax generating? So, like I said, you don't need to answer that now, but it has been a question, and I don't know if you can fully vet and answer it, but is it case by case?
So it's case by case. In some states, if you have a nonprofit entity in your ownership structure, you're automatically granted a, your tax exempt. California, a lot of Texas, I think New York, all are that way. And so often they'll have a nonprofit.
For property taxes also?
For property taxes.
Okay.
However, in Massachusetts, doesn't provide a blanket exemption, and most nonprofits in the state do pay real estate taxes.
So, just one thing that I was, it came up even after we've gone through the senior housing, just, I don't know, maybe go back and think about this. Is there a way to ensure that any nonprofit paid property taxes? I was just thinking forward, thinking if something, a property that would generate a lot of funds tried to capture those property taxes. As a nonprofit, I mean, it would put us in a hole a little bit, right?
So, uh, well, for senior housing, if it's a nonprofit sponsor, but it's a, not a subsidized property. Then, of course, you could collect taxes on that, the question is if it's affordable and if it's.
Why, of course, though, I've been try, like, I've been trying to look and answer why.
Affordable properties don't generate much revenue.
No, 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 why nonprofit? If a senior, if a nonprofit developer purchased it for senior housing, not affordable, just nonprofit, like faith-based. I mean, faith-based, I mean, religious exemption, like, so I'm just trying to like go through some of these scenarios just to make sure that we've thought about some of these things. That were maybe asked.
So, uh, well, hmm, sure, we can think about it.
No, I'm just, something to think about before we bring it up again, because.
So, in Drake, there was a proposal to put in a senior housing assisted facility. And we negotiated a pilot agreement payment in lieu of taxes. So, they paid something, they didn't pay the full tax boat that they would've. But it's very common for pilot agreements.
What, what was your concern, taxing on?
Nonprofit taxes.
So, is she, 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 her concern is that a nonprofit owner of senior housing or any affordable housing. Might be tax exempt for we would be tax benefit from.
Okay. All right.
Looks like there's a whole body of law about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so the um, just to change on my committee, this, the CPC um, projects all went forward. For town meeting except one, I think it's the antique fire trucks got dropped. I think it's ready to be bought or uh, another place to be housed, I don't know, but.
What's going on the pickleball court?
The pickleball courts, um, I think they were extending the fence or um.
Putting some sound.
Soundproofing?
And then soundproofing, yeah.
Don't they just make a ball, it doesn't make that much noise?
Trying to, actually.
Um, I'm sure news reported in sub-town, but it is noisy.
Um, I went to the Water Resources Task Force um, meeting, which was interesting, um, a couple of things. Uh, Scott Horsley reported on some of the EPA requirement or recommendations. For watershed protection, um, for uh, properties with septic systems. Um, and did a little bit of a comparison of different towns, um, we're kind of in the middle in terms of uh, amount of land area. For um, housing in watershed, uh, zone one, no, zone two of our, of our watershed. The other thing that um, they're trying to finalize a report and then the uh, another thing is that they wanna do a survey. And um, I think that the, my opinion of the survey was that the purpose for it was unclear. Um, they wanted to kind of, I think, get people's attention, so, um, and then lastly, uh, Scott had a friend. I'm not sure it was Scott Horsley, somebody um, has said that you can do PFAS um, like fingerprinting. So, if you have PFAS in your water, you can then sort of fingerprint it, so to speak, to see if it came from a particular source. In particular, the, a sports field and in, and while that is possible, um, I think they ran the fingerprint. And the PFAS in our Lincoln Street well is not, is inconclusive as to any particular source. So.
Speaking of that, we haven't seen the reports from the Essex County Club in a long time. We used to get those on an annual basis and I was wondering if there was a special permit that required some testing. And I'm wondering if we should change that special permit or update it to include PFAS.
You're, you're right, I haven't seen one in a while, but they were using um, really organic stuff. And the, and you know, if you go through that report, it's a bunch of numbers and uh.
No, 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 but the, the special permit from the Essex County Club was, this is what you need to test for. And I'm just saying, in light of what we're looking at, maybe we need to revisit that and.
Why don't we ask?
Could you uh, yeah, could you follow up on that, uh, where that stands?
My understanding, I asked about that, cause I've dealt with a number of water. Primary watersheds and with golf courses and um, I was told by. I think engineer, well, DPW engineering, that they tended to use very organic stuff and that it wasn't an issue.
But we should follow up on where those reports are going, or why we're not seeing them.
Technically, they're supposed to go to the building inspector.
I think they're supposed to come to us.
They're supposed to come, they, yeah, they used to always come to the planning board.
Come to us.
Okay.
Had a brief discussion.
For some reason, but I think.
I'll find out.
Could you pull up the special permit?
So, okay, um.
I don't know if there's a copy on this.
We good with liaisons, anything from the finance?
I actually have a couple more. Lot, but not the irrelevant.
Okay, anything from anyone else?
Yeah.
Yes.
I have, um, so, um, the planner report, um. There were a couple of notes that I wanted to comment on, um. The town clerk did do some sleuthing and found that information about the planning board. Which was established by a vote in nineteen thirty at annual town meeting. And it was then a seven-member board and um.
Just for information, I wasn't on the board.
So, um, a seven-member board and um, the general laws, there's. A section on CBA and planning board and the planning board is like vacant.
Right.
Um, there's no description under the general laws of the planning board, so. One, one of the things I suggested is to take her sleuthing and to put it in there. Um, so, um, the other thing is I am working with the um. Sue Brown and Sue Croft ended up um, applying for and securing a mass downtown initiative grant. Um, to look at placemaking. And so, I've inherited that grant, um, and I am working with a consultant called Civic Space Collaborative. They actually were the consultants that did skating by the sea with Tiffany and that was under a different grant.
Who's placemaking me?
Part of the ARPA stuff, remember, we had, we, there was a long, lots of meetings. And that's what we decided that we were gonna go for.
Oh, it's not the sign, so.
Any ARPA, but it's.
That's way fine, isn't it?
Signage is way fine.
Well, it's, it's a combination, so um, it's um.
Giving you.
So, they're focusing on public, so they're working with the downtown improvement district. I want them to do a presentation to this board in one of the next couple of meetings. Um, so they're focusing on public restrooms, wayfinding, some wayfinding. I don't want them to do a whole wayfinding um, RFP because I've done those, so I don't wanna waste their time doing that. Um, public art, um, streetscape furniture, which DPW and REC have weighed in on. And looking at potentially pocket parks, so um, in the meantime. Um, the downtown improvement group is working with the chamber on a parking brochure that will be. Out this summer and also will be on the Cape Ann Chamber website. Um, and then police is looking at additional enforcement signage to connect Beach Street to the town hall parking lot. Um, and there's a couple of other things, but I just wanted to um, bring that up. Because um, I'd really like them to do a short presentation.
Well, the parking brochure may have some changes if we decide, you know, some of that, she had all these different parking rights.
Right. I have civic, what is the name of the firm, civic, civic something?
Civic Space Collaborative.
So, I have a comment, so one thing, I think it was in the tide, they said, come on down to skate by the sea and tell us what you want. A bathroom, some arts.
They did do a survey.
No, I didn't.
All right, so here's my question, we, we all, I think there was some concern about the surveys that went out with the master plan. I, is there a way to survey the town that is. Traceable to town people, like, can we send something, other, I think Hamilton does it, like, they send out things randomly on your phone and you can answer. So, you know it's only going to a Hamilton resident, like, I feel like we should have some way to track this back to. Data that we can rely on.
So, what would, what would be in the survey, what would, what would, what would you think would be in the survey, what is, what do you look at, information?
Perhaps, you know, if there's only one piece of information and it goes out in your tax bill and you have to return it, or you return it with a QR, I don't know. Is there some way to make sure that the surveys that we're gathering, we can track back to Manchester residents? Um, and then we get it out to more people, I don't know, I mean, asking people to come down to, you know, skate by the sea. After half of it has already been over and, you know, people may not be interested in skate by the sea, I'm just saying, it didn't reach a huge group of people. So, is there a way to reach the entire town and gather some meaningful data? I mean, on and ongoing, like the wastewater and this, I mean, just everything in general, not just.
I think that the, the issue around surveys is that they should be purposeful. We should know what, what, what we want to achieve, um, and have a sign, a uh, unbiased. Uh, sampling and unbiased um, question, I mean, I'm, I was quite concerned about the water resources one. It was um, wasn't clear, I was only there for one meeting, it was not clear what the purpose was. And um, uh, I think it was kind of a shock and awe kind of approach. Um, and, and that can be one way, that can be a purpose, if, and, and to this, but um.
Thinking out loud, like town meeting, a QR code when you go in, is there something, take a survey on the way in, you know everyone going into town meeting.
But.
I'm just, we need to be more creative and getting more feedback from more people.
And I think we have to be careful about inferring, you know, to your point, if it's just a, a particular slice of people who are, who are. Who are surveyed, if you only, if you only ask the people who come in on a boat to Reed Park, if they want a bathroom. Then, you know, at Reed Park, then you're going to get an answer that says.
Should not make decisions based on that as a town.
Right, any more than.
Understanding the limitations of the survey.
So, I think.
So, it should be legit that everybody has an opportunity to.
Bill or something that goes out with the general.
But I think um, also you can get survey overload is if one group asks about bathrooms and then about water.
Well, maybe the town can.
Parking and then about, yeah, there.
Consolidate surveys into one, every water bill, like, this is, I don't know, we just need to.
And what do we wanna know, what is the real purpose?
Yeah.
Right, I, I would just say, yeah, what do you, what do you need to know with a survey, because surveys are actually very difficult to, to, to design. The question that you're asking and I think there's a difference in. What's information that we need to act on versus just kind of idea generating, what would you like to see for activities? Well, there's not really big stakes at that, it's like, yeah, I'd like to see some, I'd like to learn how to play ultimate frisbee, I wanna see more skating, like. That's kind of survey, seems to be informal, sort of idea gathering, it's okay, we don't really need to govern or oversee that. But if we're looking for things that have, uh, you know, kind of larger stakes or um. That we somehow need to act on, then we probably do wanna get more streamlined about, you know. What are the five questions we need to know, because um, people get tired of surveys, you get surveys every day in your email. And how many of those do you respond to, even though you're like, I'm gonna flag that, I'm gonna come right back to it in two weeks.
Amazon call, I respond.
I think this is more of an idea.
Yeah, I think idea generation.
And I think you have to take that in, into account.
Yeah.
I think some furniture is different than bathrooms, right?
So, I mean, there's. That's not to say you can't ask the question and we're still gonna be making good judgments about it. Because that's not the only piece of information we're gonna look at, if you happen to ask people who are at a skating party, do you want a bathroom? Well, if I was a mom with a young kid there, I'd say, yeah, I'd like a bathroom, please, cause otherwise I gotta go back home again, but um.
Skaters all wanted more hot chocolate.
Yeah, it's just one piece of information and for that kinda stuff, I think it's kind of anecdotal.
On a regular basis?
Understood. Okay, um, are the minutes, I don't have, with any minutes in there, Gail?
Yeah, there are two.
Has anyone reviewed them?
Yes.
Yep.
And Sherwood?
Yep.
We'll stop with Ms. Foley.
I would like to hear other comments first.
Okay, we'll stop with Mr. Oden.
I, nobody else does.
I, I was not at the meeting on the ninth, which is one set of minutes, so I can't comment on that, the other set seemed okay.
I just have, on the, on the ninth, I just have two uh, comments on page three, the bottom. Um. The, it says, Ms. Foley asked, who was the team Ms. Where referred to, Ms. Where indicated, so it just, you gotta get rid of. Ms. Where referred to, just an added sentence in there. Um, page four, you say Denny Hall, twenty Masconomo Street, I don't think you spelled Denny, D E N I, I think it's D E N N Y.
No, I think it's D E, uh, E.
What is it?
I think it's spelled correctly.
D N I, D E N I?
I think so. Oh, it's definitely, it ends an I.
D E N N I?
I've done that, I've done his name for years.
Okay, oh, yeah, okay, that just struck me as, I've never seen that, um, that was it.
Move to approve the minutes, has anyone else, Sarah?
No.
Motion to approve the minutes, um.
Christina was not here either.
Thank you.
The ninth, uh, move to approve the ninth, January ninth, as amended.
So, second?
And uh, Sue was not on board, so it's Ron.
That was my.
Oh. Sarah, Laura and Mary can vote.
Oh, I had one more on page four, it said that I seconded a motion about the state action plan and I did not.
Yes, you did.
No, I did not. I re-listened to the tape, I did not. I'm quite clear on that.
Who was the second then?
All right.
It might have been Laura, but I couldn't tell by the, I couldn't, the voices were all muddled, but it was me.
Laura, okay, so um.
Are these the meeting notes that said there was a typo that changed slop to slope for these two?
That was, that was the prior one.
I don't know, cause I looked in the OneDrive and I did not see these meeting minutes, so.
Okay, Sarah, your motion is to approve minutes of the ninth.
As amended.
And what, what month are we talking?
January.
January.
January ninth, and there's a second?
But you don't have a court.
Yes, you do, yes, you do, you have, it can only be Ron, Sarah, Laura and Mary, those are the people who were present. Sue was not on the board and Chris.
Second the motion, any, you all four of us agree?
Yes.
Well, I'm gonna agree with Mary's careful proofreading. She always does a great job.
It's approved.
Uh, January thirtieth.
As amended?
I haven't made my comments yet.
No, as amended.
So.
Yeah, sure, as amended by Mary.
Oh, we didn't make them yet.
I didn't make them yet.
Okay.
Just the first sentence, it says, called the planning board meeting to order with four members and there was seven present. Just change that to seven and um, that's really it.
So, January thirtieth. And everybody.
Motion.
I'll move to approve with Mary's amendment.
Second.
And everyone can vote.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor, raise hands, all those against. Okay, Gail, you got two more to post.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you, Mary.
Um, reminder to the board, if you haven't taken your conflict of interest training, the deadline is the sixteenth. Oh.
I have a question.
On taking it. Mary?
I took it.
Your question is on?
Uh, FEMA maps, do we have the hard copy FEMA maps? How do we get a copy?
Um, there is a copy down in Gail's space, she is the keeper of that set. And Sue Croft has one because she is mission control on the harbor management plan.
Can we get a, an extra copy for Mary?
No.
Can we scan them?
Was pushing it.
Can we scan them?
Or are they electronic or digital?
They're available electronic.
They're, they're, you must say.
They're available electronically.
Yeah.
Um, so you have the electronic version?
Yes, yeah.
So like, how big are they, I could, maybe I could print them at my work.
This long by about that wide and there's like ten or twelve of them.
Oh, there are?
Yeah.
Was the, um, communication date extended?
I don't know the answer to that, but I'll find out.
Because I think as a board, we need to comment on them because these FEMA maps are really gonna drive any decisions with downtown, with parking, with, um, development, with bylaws.
Would we comment on the maps?
Um, just if the board had any comments on the, um, changes from twenty seventeen to now.
But I guess I don't, I wouldn't know where, how, on what basis I would, except to say, oh my.
Well, I think we need to get them to the public, right? Because people's properties are, I mean, I think that's it, the town has until. I don't know what, how, yeah, I don't know how the town proactively pursues them, but I know there is an open comment period for the planning board and for residents. So I think if we are going to use these as a guide for development, we need to at least get familiar with them. Um.
And they were our last meeting, or the meeting before this.
We did see a presentation at the select board meeting of, um, possible flooding areas in twenty fifty, twenty thirty.
FEMA, that was what.
That wasn't FEMA, that was a study by a consultant.
So, yeah, that all fits together.
And to the, um, to the, so FEMA maps by their nature are always gonna be backward looking because they go on historical data, they don't make projections about future flooding. So, um, so we'll look at them, I, I wouldn't expect necessarily of a comment. Uh, happy to, happy to review them as a board. I think the, the projections are what are going to, um, be a significant factor in our, you know, making land use decisions.
Well, I mean, I think if we're expected to comment on them, then we should be getting this information somehow out to the public. So they know to comment on them, there's plenty of people that are in these zones.
Yeah, like tap, whatever, anyhow, so they're out there on the public.
Put the electronic version on the website and to also note that it's available in two offices in Town Hall for review.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
It's, these maps are pretty sobering. I mean, I actually, um, sent the electronic version to, um, a representative at the MBTA and also a representative of, um, DHCD. And I said, what is the MBTA doing to improve the situation here? Um, pretty much from Smelly Beach to the Beverly Line, it's underwater. So, um.
So we won't have any more Smelly Beach. So that's an improvement.
I mean, it used to be called Smelly Beach.
Stinky Beach.
I don't know.
It, it might be useful just to look at the maps, you know, project them, look at them in a support. Because I, I think we'll also need to be, um, kind of precise in the words that we use about, you know, I know you're very familiar with these maps, Betsy, when we say something is underwater, I want people to understand that. Okay, we're talking about the one hundred year, you know, flood plain, not that it's, there's a difference between that scenario and the kind of, um, regular, regular inconvenience flooding that's gonna be happening. And there are very different boundaries and, and, um, so maybe it's useful to just have us review it as a board and kind of, um, ask any questions. Because I think there's a lot of potential as we get into the forty A about, um, you know, what does it mean about these flood projection areas? And on one hundred year storm and when we say underwater, it's not that the rail line's necessarily gonna be underwater every day, but that there are projections that show areas that are, um, flood vulnerable.
It's interesting, the MBTA, um, has a resiliency and vulnerability, um, section on their website. And if you look at that, they really pretty much only include their facilities. They do not, um, indicate that they have any parking in Manchester's downtown. And I guess the parking is actually owned by others and not by the T, but they don't address the rails. The ra, so, um, I'm thinking, you know, um, I lived in Newburyport for thirty years and when the big dig went in, there was a legal requirement. Conservation Law Foundation pushed it to require the rail line to be continued from Ipswich to Newburyport. Well, it's all over marshland and they raised it, but.
Would that be a natural flood protection if they raised the rail? All the way through here, be a natural, uh, stormwater protection, um, barrier.
It probably would be, but.
Goes right through the crease.
You know, I haven't heard anything, any, I mean, they don't address, address the rails at all in their sustainability, um, section.
They talk all about.
They'll, yeah.
And just on, I'll find out with that, the, these firm maps will lead into the flood plain by law, so I think the board will be interested.
Right.
So Mary, what's the date you need to comment by? Well, it was thirty days from February, what was the date of that letter? So we're probably at it, that's my concern, is that, I know you, you had mentioned you were gonna ask for an extension.
Right, I'll send out an email to him tonight or tomorrow. So.
Okay, um, so we have a next meeting, we have a special permit coming in on School Street, is that?
I think that's the tenth.
Oh, it is.
Yeah. Under what, uh, it's like an reviewer.
Yeah, it's a special permit for a piece of property that's, I think he's come before us before. I don't, it's on the water.
So, to follow up on, on something stated by Christina, um, the, the water supply, groundwater supply district zoning. There's a provision in that, that specifies that you can get a determination from the planning board. And what apparently historically was happening is somebody would come in for a determination about a property and its amount of coverage or drainage system or whatever, and getting an opinion or an advisory from the planning board. But then, a written decision was getting written and posted with the town clerk on a twenty day appeal. So, but there was no notice to the abutters, there was no public hearing notice, there was none of that. So, I ended up, this was probably two or three months ago, um, I was like, how, how does this happen? Because I know of no law that allows the planning board to issue advisories and then a decision gets made and then it gets posted with the town clerk. So, went back and forth with legal counsel on this and, um, the conclusion was, and this I have in the email, which I will forward, is that, um, the best scenario would be for the planning board to hold a public hearing, notice abutters, and issue, um, a decision. And the decision gets filed with the clerk and it's not a special permit, it's basically an advisory.
To hold a public hearing on that?
Yeah.
So what's the address?
Also on the tent?
Um, yeah.
Two public hearings on the tent?
No, it's just that one.
Well, we're gonna have the regulations.
Oh, then the regulations would be the other one.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah. It's on School Street.
What address?
Um, one seventeen. And there is some question, that property is coming into the ZBA potentially for a swimming pool or a hot tub or something like that.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, needed to remember my conclusions.
Right, so anyhow, trying to figure out, um, if the data they submitted includes the hot tub.
So the other thing I just heard in passing and I guess things, when cell signaling gave their presentation, they said that they wanted to simultaneously go to the Concom and us. I just don't see how that's gonna happen. I mean, we need their conclusions before we can discuss, right?
I think that's gonna happen, I think that's.
Okay, I just, well, they said they were gonna go simultaneously and I was like, okay, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page there.
Yeah.
Sarah Melo, should I have a comment on this?
Yes, so the School Street property has come to us and they tried to evade CPA regulations. We told them they needed to come before us with respect to either a pool or a spa, didn't matter how small it was.
They came before you?
No, we told them they need to come before us.
Oh, oh, okay.
Because it's a swimming pool.
It's a swimming pool, is it?
They also.
Well, it's a claiming it's a quote unquote drop in spa. And we said our regulations cover everything with water and they need to come before us. And they didn't want to.
Well, maybe we should.
Is that what it is?
So it's some kind of swimming pool, hot tub, but then it's also, um, they put in a stormwater system, but the stormwater system, I, 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 I don't know.
It's, it sounds like.
They need to come here.
They remedy the impervious, but I, I'd let, that's why I'd.
Well, uh, we told them that they need to come to us with coverage with respect to structures and with respect to total coverage, structures and.
There's an engineering report on all that, right? I mean, did you?
And they're coming before you with respect to drainage.
Right.
Okay, it's not really before us right now.
Just along those lines and, um, I'm assuming what you were referring to was people came in front of us for, um, the underground wa, water recharge and there was no public hearing? I don't know, I don't know of any cases that they have.
Well, the way, the bylaws worded is, um, the planning board, I forget the exact language, but the planning board reviews the, um, percent coverage and any type of infiltration or stormwater system and offers an opinion, but it needs a public hearing.
Yeah, no, my, so, sorry, my point was gonna be that, um, can someone correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but the issues we've come up before with that is that there's nobody in town that then actually expects these. Um, and there's also, I think for our bylaw, you're supposed to do yearly reports on those. And so again, it's an enforcement issue that we don't have in place. So it'll come before the planning board and we'll okay it. And then it just goes into Never Never Land.
Well, as I understand it, I talked with DPW and the town engineer and they could do the installation inspection. Um, and it could be included in the, in the permit, uh, in the planning board's vote that an annual, um, reporter gets inspected every year and that report goes to the code enforcement officer and the town engineer and the planning board.
And we may very well have done that in the past, it just doesn't.
It just doesn't come this way.
No.
I don't think it happens at all.
Okay.
Well, it would probably be up to the land, homeowner. It seems like it might be up to, I'm, I'm just guessing, but it's up to the homeowner or the property owner.
To submit yearly.
They don't do it, there's not a, uh, a tickled file that says.
The thing is, is that if you have like a storm scepter or some kind of, um,
Clean it out structure.
You know, you have to clean it out and, and the, um, the, they require, particularly after a storm or something, they want you to clean it out immediately. So there's all kinds of provisions on operation and maintenance of those.
Oh, yeah.
Agreed, but I just don't think we have the, and maybe that can be in one of our.
The police.
Thingies that, um, it, it's a problem because we think we're solving the problem by having these recharge systems and then nothing, you know, like next door to me, they have to be on an automatic generator or sump pump because they're so below the water table. And then that pumps out into the street, into the.
Storm, storm drain.
Yeah, so it's a pipe under the ground, but you hear that generator going off, you know, like once every four days, especially if it's rainy or wet, um. And they have a storm underground discharge system, but I, yeah, it's.
Probably flooded.
Can you get the applicants, uh, where, that he's going to Concom and ZBA before, ahead of us, is that correct?
For cell signaling?
No, no, for this School Street thing. What is, what is his sequence, uh, you know?
Well, his sequence.
He coming to us first?
Well, the sequence should be to the ZBA first.
Now, the first.
But aren't they the special permit granting? Then don't they go last, should, for advisory, shouldn't we go first and they get all the information from Concom and then they go last?
Special permit should be first and then you are offering an advisory
For advisory.
On the percent coverage and the stormwater system.
Would that be input to the special permit?
Who were you?
Right, it could be.
That's what, because in other times we've had, um, things that have gone before Concom, uh, like somebody wanted a dock off of their, uh, parcel and Concom looked at it first and, you know, we had all those advisory, so, in case of Concom, it wasn't advisory, but we had other information that was important to our special permit granting.
Sarah, did you have a comment on that sequence?
Yes, our preference is that all the other boards look at it first. Because once we issue a special permit, if they wanna change anything, they needs to come back to us for a modification. So if we had a pool out on Proctor, which we approved and Concom moved it and they had to come back before us. So we think we should be the end result with respect to a special permit.
Makes sense.
Okay, got it. Um, so.
Well, our advisory is gonna be based on assumptions because it might change.
Are we getting plans?
We're gonna get, we're gonna get plans, we're gonna get a report and then I, I've asked the DPW and the building inspector to weigh in on this.
The stamped plans, I mean, whole nine yards, not like hand drawn?
Well, I saw the report, I don't know if I saw, were there plans?
That's why we need rules and rights.
I mean, they, they have to have a special permit.
This plan is stamped.
And then another one for the ZBA, so.
We're not doing it, we're not issuing a special permit.
No, but she's saying we have to have a special, we have to have a posted, posted with the abutters.
Right.
For our advisory and then, um, and then for, um, the ZBA again.
He's done the abutters list already.
You have to have two public hearings, wow.
Um, okay, can the, um, when the, um, Rules and Regulations Committee meets, can you sort of come up with a schedule?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then I, I think I'm gonna put back on, and once we get the, um, ruling from, um, and get this cross check done with, uh, Attorney General stuff, we're gonna get back on with these, um.
Right, zoning art, so it seems to me that.
Including Laura's, anybody's comments, which ones we wanna go forward with, if any, wanna. I think we're in a good position, we've got a lot of the I's and T's and everything crossed. But I need, we think we need to have an outreach, you know, we need to get outreach and, and maybe another public hearing, uh, once we're done. And, uh, I don't think spring would be, uh, I, I don't think a, a second town meeting. I think we would target the fall, I think, on this one, especially since that schedule you laid out, was that shared with everyone?
I gave it to everybody, that was a draft, but my purpose in doing that was just to show how condensed it is, you, you know, the board can't start thinking about zoning articles in January for an April ten meeting. I mean, it's, it's the, every community I've worked in, it's always been extremely condensed.
So it'll be back on the agenda, that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying. Plus all these other things.
So what I've heard is that the meet and greet that they had at the high school was great, but people want a Q and A. They wanna be able to sit there and ask questions and get answered in front of everyone, so I don't know how everyone thinks about that. We have plenty of time to think about it, but they liked the format, but they wanted like a true Q and A.
Okay, that's something I think.
Because I think people get frustrated at the public hearings, we'll take that under advisement, we don't give any feedback. So something less formal where they can follow up and ask a question and fully understand it. Because we can't expect the public to understand it as well as we do, I mean, they're just hearing some of this, reading it and they have questions and if we don't let them follow up and.
Understood.
All right.
I think that's a good idea.
I, I'm gonna just continue that theme because I think, um, a presentation that's being broadcast to everybody and maybe we can, um, get some help from Tiffany or somebody on the communications end to say, whatever we want the message to say, right, about, you know, here, here are the changes we're making, here's the substantive stuff, here's the administrative stuff, whatever the story needs to be to have everybody in the high school auditorium or somewhere where anyone who wants to come can get the present. Or somewhere where anyone who wants to come can get the presentation, get the same information, and then we have this Q and A. I think the meet and greet was nice too, in the sense that you could ask, you could have these conversations, but it wasn't like everybody was hearing the same story necessarily. With someone open to interpretation, to how one person would look at the information, and then how whoever happened to be standing there would try to explain it. So, um, it might be a little more rehearsed, we would have talking points, we'd have a presentation, and uh, kind of prep people. For getting to the town meeting, understanding what we're talking about.
What we're gonna do is ahead of town, cause we don't wanna answer these questions at town meetings.
Right.
We wanna get them ahead of time, much better approach, I think.
And not having like, you know, grammatical stuff or just, just the content, just like the substance of stuff.
Good shape grammatically, and I think we're in, we've gotten through, I think they're in good packets, I mean.
It seems like they are too, but even the way we presented, you know, just focusing on like the high level messages, not.
Once the changes get incorporated, and we got all the cross checking of numbering all done, and I think we're in good shape. Okay, that's enough, I think I'll take an objection to a motion to adjourn. Anybody object to adjourn?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you all.